You can follow along with us on our board book here. I call this meeting of the River Road Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus or COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. We are meeting by use of Google Meet software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be unmuted for three minutes to speak. If the speaker submitted written comments in advance, Dana Finley, our Board Secretary, will read the comments into record before or during the board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board-adopted procedures to the extent practicable. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The software application allows for 250 people to view and interact at a time. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at toma@oag.texas.gov. At this time, I would like to announce that all board members are present. I'm going to go through the roll call. If you are online, would you please say here? Copan Smith.
Here.
Lori Peterson.
Here.
Butch Dawson.
Here.
Dana Finley. Dana.
Here.
Danielle Coleman.
Here.
Brian Shannon. Brian Shannon. So Brian is not online with us. And I am Board President Amanda Brown. For this meeting, if there are no objections from the board, we will be suspending our normal Roberts Rules of Order board operating procedures, and all voting will be done by roll call. Thank you. All right, at this time, we will have our invocation given by Copan Smith.
I must pray. Lord, I thank you for this day and all the blessings you've given us, Lord, and we ask you to be at this, was make decisions for our district, especially in this time that we're having with the sicknesses and illnesses, Lord. Just ask you to help us to make the right decisions that best leads our kids and our staff, Lord, which asks to be those who are sick and that are dealing with all the issues with the illness going around, Lord, which asks you to help us to make these decisions and do what we need to do, and the doctors make the decisions to do, to make things go away, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Copan. Next, we'll move into our Pledge of Allegiance, and that's going to be done by Lori Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for which it stands, one nation under God. It's visible with liberty and justice for all.
We now have Brian Shannon on the line with us, so we will show him as joining at 6:07. And our mission statement will be given by Danielle Coleman.
Our mission is to provide an innovative and comprehensive educational program that prepares students to be productive and responsible citizens.
Thank you, Danielle. All right. We welcome all of our visitors online tonight. And at this time, if there is anyone that would like to address the board, we will open that up. You will need to unmute yourself. All right. The board encourages comments about the district from members of the public. Anyone who signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with board procedures may do so at this time. For any member of the public who is accompanied by a translator, your time will be doubled as required by law. Please remember, per the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. In addition, the board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, or their parents, and the general public. Policies and procedures on public comment and filing complaints are available in the Central Administration Office. One more time, any public comment? Okay. We will move on then on to presentations. Discussion items, our superintendent's report. Mr. Kelly.
Yes, ma'am. First and foremost, let me thank everybody. This is an unprecedented event, an unprecedented time that we're all participating in, and I am so thankful for everything that everybody is doing to make this happen. Our school district is up and going, and we've got a lot of awesome things happening. School is in session, even though the governor closed down the traditional school setting. Wildcats are learning, Wildcat teachers are teaching, and things are happening in a phenomenal way and in a phenomenal pace. And so this is definitely new for everyone involved. But I will tell you, first and foremost, just thank you to all those individuals that have been very patient with us. This is definitely a learning experience for everyone, and so thank you so much for that. As far as COVID-19 information, you know, Governor Abbott had a press conference today where he spoke a little bit about trying to get various businesses maybe rolled back into production. And so there's a lot of different things that are happening. Yesterday, he did extend the state's emergency declaration. A lot of people have asked, what does that mean for schools? What does that mean for our May 4th, the start date? It's my understanding that during the question and answer session of today's meeting, somebody did actually ask him that, and the question and his response was that that is something that he will be addressing later on this week. But for now, our campuses, our traditional campuses are closed until May 4th, and we'll see what the governor has to say regarding schools and schools in Texas later on this week. Do keep in mind that really, there are only three people that can choose to close schools outside of the school district itself taking action, and that, of course, is the governor. That's the Texas Health Authority, and that's, of course, the mayor, or in our case, the county judge. River Road resides in both the city limits and Potter County, so we would fall under the jurisdiction of not only the mayor of Amarillo with one of our campuses, but of course, the Potter County judge. And so we'll also be listening to where they come from. They have been very, very good at working with school districts and allowing us to give input with regard to what we're trying to do. State and local leaders, bottom line is, if that decision's not made, probably by the end of April, that last week of April, then the decision will fall on the school district as to whether or not we continue closed after May 4th, or we reopen our doors. And so that is definitely something that we'll be discussing and following for the next several weeks. Our meal distribution program is going well. We are averaging around 400 meals each day, with about 80 of those meals being delivered. And so we've told our residents, we've told our parents, if you know of anyone who is in need of meals and they can't get out to come to our distribution center, to please give us a call. Our goal, and the goal of our school board, is that no child goes hungry. And so we want to make sure that the residents of the River Road community know this, and if there's anything that you need, please give us a call. As far as grades and policy changes go, I know during an emergency call meeting shortly after all these announcements were made, the board granted me some authority to work outside the parameters of board policy for various things. But at the same time, the board expects an update as to whatever decisions are made outside of board policy. And to date, the only thing we've really looked at has been our grading policies and also the possibility of waiving the assessment process for our teachers and for our principals. And so I'm asking the board to take a look at a couple of things with along those lines. As far as grading policies go, the only policy changes I'm recommending at this time are going to be dealing with the class of 2020 rankings. We're looking at stopping the class of 2020 rankings at the end of it's always traditionally been the end of the fifth six weeks, but we're looking at making a temporary change for this particular class and having those rankings calculations done at the end of the fourth six weeks. Grading period, we're not going to make those changes official until the board acts on a resolution per Tasby's recommendation. That resolution will be presented at the May 4th board meeting. Currently, with our distance learning transition, we are operating under the current grading system that we have always had in place. We have not made any changes to the district calendar in terms of the grading period. The fifth six weeks wrapped up on April 3rd, and the current six six weeks is starting, started on April 6th and is scheduled to end with the last day of school on May 22nd. Teachers are currently taking grades on work submitted via online or packets. If we are not getting work turned in by a student, then contact is being made by a teacher or administrator to that student's guardian. Promotion and retention decisions will be made based on the student's whole school year, taking into consideration the current situation we are operating under. As far as district and campus updates go, got a lot of awesome things that are happening with regard to that. And so let me just update everyone. The buildings are being monitored and cleaned as used. With most staff members working from home, cleaning needs are limited to those rooms that are in those areas that are being used. Principals are reporting staff members on campus, so cleaning crews can check. Cleaning crews are on a rotation to allow for employees to work and stay home, so we're really working hard to adhere to the president's mandates, the governor's mandate, and of course, our mayor's mandate with regard to trying to work things in and out with our crews and allowing them opportunities to minimize contact with other crew members. Transportation crews are also doing the same thing. They're operating under the same rotation. We're delivering our meals via Suburbans, and so we've got different people driving those Suburbans. We've not had to break out our bus fleet yet, but if we keep growing and we keep getting requests for delivery, that may be something we have to look at in the near future. Some of our employees are in need of their CDLs, so those classes are happening as we speak. We've got some of our transportation individuals that are teaching some of those classes before those individuals go to take their tests with DPS. Cafeteria crews, I can't brag enough about our cafeteria crews. They are doing an amazing job getting meals prepared, getting meals distributed daily. Those employees are working safely and diligently to take care of kids' needs. It's just amazing watching these individuals really pour their heart and soul into this because they really, they want to make sure that the one thing kids aren't worried about during this whole experience is food, and so they're working extra hard to make sure that we're getting those needs met. Safety and security audit that we had scheduled for this week has been moved to the week of July 27th. The safety and security team will be meeting soon to continue work on the emergency operations plan. Excuse me. As far as personnel go, this month, we're looking at term contract renewals. Next month, we'll be looking at probationary contract decisions to be made by the board with regard to renewals and things of that such. We are currently going to start looking for a curriculum and federal programs director to assist with those two areas. We're asking for previous administration experience for those individuals to hold at least an administrator certificate. And of course, previous trainer experience with secondary and elementary curriculum is nice. Multiple years, multiple experiences, the position will be a top-tier administrative position. Campuses will continue to interview for vacancies by Google Meets, et cetera. The middle school and high school are currently looking for English teachers. Anybody interested in applying to River Road ISD, of course, can go through our portable, or excuse me, our portal at www.rrisd.net. Many of the district's teachers are participating in collaborative webinars, sharing ideas and experiences to help teachers in other districts. So we have several people that are doing a lot of things other than making sure that kids are getting instructed. And it just tells you about teachers, about principals. You know, they've made that transition, they've made that shift. I'm very proud of what they're doing, and so there's a lot of things happening at the Willow Vista Campus. Faculty accountability, documenting the work logs. Teachers and paraprofessionals log all work done from home, whether it's book studies, professional development, or instruction via Class Dojo. Parents-student contact logs, they've been in touch with all families by either phone or dojo messaging, and so instructional continuity and distance learning is happening. They've distributed instructional packets, their second set of instructional packets, and each packet includes about two weeks' worth of work and materials to help parents, help their kids keep on track. They're asking, they're not asking students to return packets, so all teachers are using Class Dojo to connect with students by posting read-aloud videos, activities, et cetera, and students are to post evidence of work in student portfolio in lieu of returning packets. And then congratulations to Ms. Shontae Ochoa. Ms. Ochoa was nominated as the Teacher of the Year for that campus. At the Rolling Hills campus, the teaching staff is working hard to be in contact with students daily on Google Classroom and two times a week by phone. Special populations like dyslexia, counseling, sped needs are also being looked at and are also being, are also in contact with those individuals. Many parents have been letting their campus know that they are appreciating how much the staff is contacting and talking with their kids. Many kind words are spoken about the staff. Front offices daily from 8:30 to 12:30, alternating days. Instructional coaches are helping with planning, copy and packets, and handouts on those days. Rolling Hills is trying to push Google Classroom with online distance learning, but they have about half of each grade level not able to do so, so they'll continue to work through the packet system with that. And then, of course, we've got several of our teachers working in collaboration with teachers in Region 16 to offer best practices webinar. Case example, Alicia Worthing has taught a webinar on math ideas with some of the other teachers from Canyon ISD. And also, congratulations to Ms. Worthing. Ms. Worthing was nominated as the Teacher of the Year for the Rolling Hills campus. At the middle school, lots of great things happening at the middle school as well. Teachers are downloading lesson plans by Tuesday of each week. This gives the middle school two days to get their packets ready to help parents and students not be so overwhelmed with work. The middle school worked out a schedule for alternating days as to when work is assigned, and you can kind of take a look at the chart that's posted there on the, on the board book program, just different things to look at. There's some flexibility with that chart. Some of the teachers are doing, you know, a little bit less, maybe. Some of the teachers are working with other teachers to kind of combine certain lessons, so there's a lot of things going, and I will take a moment just to tell any parents that have joined us. If you have any questions whatsoever, please do not hesitate to contact any of those campuses. Don't hesitate to contact the principals either via email or phone call. That will help out tremendously because we understand that parents are going through a whole new process with this way of learning as well, and we want to be a resource to our parents. So the middle school teachers will continue to call weekly on any students not completing work, any students who are struggling with work, or anyone who calls or emails them and asks for assistance. Some questions have been asked about our packets. When we get those packets in, per CDC and Emerald Health Department has, you know, recommended that we let those packets kind of rest for 48 hours in an area so that if there's any type of virus still on those packets, it has a chance to dissipate before we start putting hands on packets and teachers start pulling that information out to grade them. So the process is a little slow, but we are trying to make sure that we are being safe and secure with our staff and making sure that our staff doesn't put themselves in a harmful situation. Big kudos and applause to the middle school staff for staying in communication with students through a variety of different methods, whether it's Facebook or Google, Google Classroom stuff. They put together a virtual spirit week that was a pretty big hit and was pretty awesome. So it was kind of nice seeing the teachers get involved in that along with some of our students. And then, of course, middle school office hours. Usually, you can find middle school people in the office from about 8 o'clock to 12 o'clock. We are really encouraging our staff to try to work from home as much as possible, but we understand the phones ringing, and we want to make sure that we're available to parents that are, have any questions or need any assistance. Moving on to high school. Almost all high school parents have been contacted by email or phone call to gather information about student needs. The parents that high school was not able to reach had letters mailed to the house requesting for visits and things along those lines. Several students were having some internet issues, so packets have been steadily sent out in addition to access to Google Classrooms. Also, communication will continue throughout the distance learning term. Gina Montgomery is printing out weekly reports to assist administration and staff regarding student logins, minutes in classroom, et cetera, so concerns can be addressed. Counselors are also taking a very active role throughout this whole process on all of our campuses by making themselves available to students to continue assisting with college and career information, or just to be there. Some of our students are struggling with, you know, some isolation is good from time to time, but when you go from constantly being surrounded by friends and classmates to all of a sudden, you're not, then that has a tendency to really affect people in different ways. So our counselors are available to work with students. All you've got to do is just drop a little note, and your counselor will, will call you and contact you to try to help you do some things. And I know Ms. Francis and several of our other campus counselors have been doing a really bang-up job, hosting their own Google Classroom on things that you can do to kind of help you in this different way of learning. The administrative team is currently working through a couple of options at the high school for graduation. That seems to be the million-dollar question right now, is what's going to happen to graduation? And I tell you, I'll tell you the same thing I've been telling people left and right. Man, oh man, I feel so bad for our seniors, and we want to do everything in our power to make sure that our seniors have the end to their senior year that they so deserve. And so I just need everyone to know that everyone is working hard to try to figure out a way to make an outstanding ceremony for our seniors to be proud of, and there's just different options that we're playing through. Right now, we're still scheduled to have graduation on that, I believe it's May the 24th, in the Civic Center. That's all still on tap. Everything that I'm seeing is leaning us towards a different date and a different venue, but right now, everything is still scheduled for that date. But I promise you, that high school staff is working hard to make sure that that is a, that that is an event that will happen. Mr. Neese, let me turn things over to you briefly just to give us kind of an update on operations, as well as the weight room project that the Facilities Committee is currently working through.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I want to thank the Transportation Department, Mr. Perryman, and all of his folks. The cafeteria staff with Kim Terry and all of her managers and all of her employees. Also want to thank the maintenance, along with the custodial department. All three of these groups have been doing a great job. You know, the cafeteria has been still preparing meals every day for students. The Transportation Department is delivering these meals. And the custodian and maintenance, they're still, you know, of course, with the, with the, with the custodians, you know, there's not as much cleaning that needs to be done because, you know, we don't have students, but they are having to come in, disinfect, making sure, coming in behind those of us that are here and still doing everything. So yes, it is a little bit of a smaller crew, or they're working fewer hours, but definitely not having any problems getting people willing to come in and help out. And so I just want to say a special thanks to those folks, and they're just doing a bang-up job, and everyone's, everyone's taking care of business. In regards to the weight room project, we received three options from our, from our architect. And what we're doing is we'll be meeting with the Facilities Committee, reviewing all three options. Mr. Kelly and Mr. Mr. Welles and I, we've met, discussed, discussed the three options, and pretty much we all kind of concur on one particular one, but it's something we definitely want to present to the Facilities Committee to get their input. And then Barry Taylor, our architect, is contacting different builders throughout, throughout the area and just trying to get a little bit more of a concrete number for us in regards to the cost, and so that we would have something that we could present to the Facilities Committee. So any questions about any of that?
Any questions from the board?
No, thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
I'm clear.
No problems with me.
Me neither.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, if you would, when you get a chance, take a look at that information. Again, this is just basic information that we've gotten and that we're looking at. We still have a whole process to go through with this. And I've had some people asking about that particular process. And, and right now, we're just trying to collect some more information in terms of how much this particular project may cost us. And sometime in the near future, I'm hoping to get the Facilities Committee together in a regular meeting, but if not, we'll definitely put together a Zoom meeting to go over all this stuff. Or a Google meets meeting, I should say, that's what we use here at River Road to go through all this stuff. And so there's definitely some things that we're looking at. Again, you know, business is moving forward. It's not moving forward as fast as we would like. But we're continuing to do the business of the district and we want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to have everything in place. Our goal is to try to make a smooth transition as possible from this school year into the next school year. And a lot of that is behind the scenes stuff that's going on. And so board members, if you have any questions whatsoever about any of this information, do not hesitate to call me, do not hesitate to call Mr. Neese. That's not a problem at all. And we definitely want to make sure everybody's informed as we move through this process. Accountability and instruction. There's a lot of things happening from the federal standpoint with regard to our Rolling Hills and our WV campus. You might have seen word that from the federal standpoint, the campus ratings are going to stay the same for this year. So that campus will have the same rating that it had for this year, next year. However, from the state standpoint, it's been brought to our attention from Commissioner Morath that all campuses are going to be considered not rated. All districts and all campuses, when that information comes out in August, it's my understanding that those campuses will be not rated for the twenty-nineth, I'm sorry, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And so as we get more information about that, we will definitely roll that information out to school board members and to parents. And, and, and keeping in line with that. So as far as a cycle three submission goes, it's not going to be required. But TEA is asking us to start putting together some modified information for a possible cycle four submission that will allow us to make that transition from this school year and the data that we've collected from this school year to next school year. And so keeping that in mind, looking at the last part of my report is just basically over enrollment. Our enrollment has stayed pretty steady. We've, we're currently sitting on one thousand three hundred and eighteen students. If you get a chance to take a look at that enrollment report, let me know if you have any questions regarding that. But as far as my superintendent's report, that's really all that I have for right now.
All right. Our next agenda item is a discussion on school and session after May fourth.
What I'm asking the board to look at, you know, it's, it's a pretty big decision. But I know that this decision affects more than just school personnel, students and things along those lines. It also affects our community. This all could be made for us later on this week, depending on what the governor does. This decision could be made for us as to whether or not we continue with school after May fourth by the mayor. It can be made for us by the county judge. But if none of those things happen, then I have a decision to make. And that decision is to whether or not we go back to regular school as we know it, in school buildings, so forth, on May fourth. And so I kind of wanted to throw this out there as a discussion item for board members to kind of get input, be thinking about that. I value the input of the board because you speak for the community. You speak for the students and you speak for the constituents that are in your community. And so, you know, this decision I know rests and falls upon my shoulders ultimately. But I do value the input from the board and what some of your thoughts are. And feel free to speak now or feel free to shoot me an email with what you're thinking and what you would like to see happen. If no one else makes the decision, what would you like to see happen come May fourth?
Any thoughts from the board?
Yes, I got a thought if that's, if I can go right quick.
Who's this?
Brian.
Okay, hey Brian.
Okay, hey, uh, I mean, I think that our staff, our faculty, our administration have done a just an unbelievable job converting over into the digital remote learning. And I think our students just have, have, have really done great as well. But i- if it comes down to it from a May fourth to a May twenty-second, I do not believe it would be beneficial to bring them back into school and go through all those changes all over again.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else?
At this point in time, I'm, I'm concurring on the same thoughts.
Thank you, Butch.
I would agree with that. The only exception would be I think that they do need to have a closure for their school year. So maybe if we do bring them back to turn in their computers or whatever, that we do give them some kind of a party or something. You know, we bring them back for a social reason, but not for an educational reason.
Thank you, Lori.
Absolutely, bring them back managed because for the seniors. And, and to get a routine going before they start summer. I understand what Brian and Butch are saying, but I, I think it's more beneficial to them to come back, get closure for the end of the year. You know, for all grade levels. Like Lori's saying, turn things back in, get things, get a routine going before summer hits. And for all extra, extracurricular activities and everything else too.
All right, thank you, Copan. Dana, Danielle.
I see both sides really. I understand that it would be a challenge to, to get, to bring them back and to deal with all the changes. But as Lori said, from a social aspect, if I was, if I was a senior, I, I would want to walk the halls again. And I would want to tie up all the things at the end. So I, I see both sides of it. I, I don't know which way is what the answer is, but if I was a senior, I would want to come back.
All right, thank you.
I, I agree. I think that we need to give the seniors, seniors that, that opportunity.
All right. My thoughts on it are more leaning towards the seniors. And maybe that's something we look at is just bringing the seniors back if we don't bring the entire district back. I do feel like we may see a lot of parents who don't want to send their kids back. And that's something that we need to look at as well. I think time will tell what the governor says and what direction we need to move. He may not give us a choice. So, you know, maybe it's something that we look at for seniors and towards the summertime. But I think, you know, it may be a decision that we have no choice in. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything further?
Thank you, I appreciate that feedback. That, that is good. Do keep in mind, our senior right now, our senior class is the top priority in terms of students finishing up non-instructional things. And so regardless of what the governor puts out or the mayor or county judge puts out, we are planning some type of event within the confines of what the law allows us to celebrate those seniors. Case in point, we're trying to do a social media campaign where we're highlighting a couple of our seniors. Where we're highlighting a couple of our seniors every day and pushing that out via Facebook. I think some other ways that we kind of get our seniors out there and, and words out there and try to give them some semblance of closure to allow for that is something we're definitely looking at as well. And so do keep that in mind, regardless of anything that comes into play. We are going to do something to celebrate our seniors ending their public school career. And, you know, get them transitioned into the summer. The other thing that came up was, you know, if we don't have school, will we be looking at a summer school program? Those decisions are on the table. They have not been made yet. They are currently on the table and being weighed. And so those are some things we're looking at. But in terms of just a traditional come back to school. Laura, you're right. At some point, we're going to have to make some type of arrangements for kids to bring their computers back or bring their gear back. I know some of our athletes have workout gear that they probably need to go ahead and turn back into the school. And so we're starting to work through some of those processes as to what we will do and what that'll look like for our, our elective classes and how to get those things turned in. And, and we have some of our kids, especially our seniors, again, who may want to pick up projects that they might have done in Mr. Taylor's class or things along those lines. And so we're definitely working through a lot of different things. It's not just shut the doors and good luck, God bless. No, we got to transition out just like we've got to transition in.
All right. Thank you.
District update was rolled into the superintendent's report.
We took care of our district update. So we will move forward to the weight room information. And Mr. Neese?
Okay, I guess I probably jumped the gun a little bit earlier about that. But all of you have the three, the three options that Mr. Taylor put together, oh, there they are right there. Option A is, if you'll see, it's that box, kind of dark box over there. And you can see at the top kind of where that is in proximity to the, to the fieldhouse. And on option A, there's going to be quite a bit of dirt work that would be required. So it's, it's going to be probably the, the most expensive option. But you would not, if you'll look just to the, what direction is that? Just to the, to the east of that. There wouldn't, with that location, you wouldn't have to move any of the, any of the track practice areas, the long jump, high jump, triple jump area or any of that. But it is one that's going to require quite a bit of, quite a bit of dirt work. And, and, and leveling. And also there's a, a resizing of the, the holding pond over there. So anyway, that, that's, that's option one. Option B is, whoops, it would be page two. That's you going through. Option two, there it is. It is closer to the fieldhouse. We would have to move the shot put area. I'm guessing that just could go south, south there a little bit, you know, down there closer to the, to where that high jump pit is. And then, but the, the good part about this, first of all, not a ton of dirt work. And second of all, it's, it's very close to the fieldhouse. So if there's a, an emergency, like, you know, a kid is in there working out and there's maybe a tornado in the area or something like that. That would be very close to get to a safer place for those, for those students. And also, you know, with restroom facilities just right next door and, and showers and all that kind of, all that kind of stuff. That's why we kind of liked option B the, the best. Option C would be the least expensive option just because nothing would be, need to be moved and there would not be any dirt work involved whatsoever. The biggest challenge is that, if you'll see, it's a, it's a country mile from, from, from the fieldhouse. And once again, safety is, is a concern about, about that. So what Mr. Taylor's doing is he's getting some prices just for B at this point. Because I, you know, we feel like unless the Facilities Committee feels differently, that that would be our best option. And if you'll see at the top of option B, actually, it's on the slide that's right, that parking lot. What we'll do is he'll get some prices with or without it. That's kind of a luxury. We really don't need a parking lot there. But it's, 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 you know, it would be more of a convenience, I guess. So, and then some other, some other areas like grassing over here by the entrance of the stadium, that's, that doesn't have to be done. But, and so that's, he's going to get, with his estimations, he's going to have with that and, and then without it. Option B is a ninety by a hundred and fifteen foot building, which is ninety-two hundred square feet.
Okay, well, thank you very much Ricky Bobby for that in-depth presentation on, you know, how our new facility might look. And so I appreciate that time and we appreciate you taking the time to do that. And so if you need, board, if y'all need anything, you know, just make sure you contact Mr. Neese. And if you've got any questions.
Can't talk without my hands.
Sorry.
I just don't know what to do with my hands.
Make sure you contact Mr. Neese. Madam President?
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Comments?
Good for me.
I think one factor too, as far as going with B, would be the proximity for restrooms and, and sinks and amenities.
I would agree with that, Brian, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think we need to really work that parking lot to the north either.
True, thank you, Copan.
All right. We are going to move on. Any questions from the board on the monthly financials that you were provided?
I'm clear.
Thank you, Butch.
I'm clear.
Copan?
I'm good.
Danielle?
I'm good.
Dana? Condensed budget report? Andy, anything from you?
No, nothing's really changed from, from our last, from three months ago when we did our last, last budget report, so.
Okay. Anything from the board? If not, we're going to move into action items. All right. Request to consider approval of consent agenda items. Approval of minutes as presented. I will need a motion.
I make a motion to approve minutes as presented.
Brian?
I second.
Danielle? Copan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that's a seven oh unanimous vote. The motion passes. Acknowledgement and acceptance of contributions to the district. We have none. Request to consider approval of teacher term contracts as presented. I need a motion.
Make a motion, the board approved the term contract renewal recommendation as presented, subject to assignment.
Copan?
I'll second.
Dana? Copan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's seven oh unanimous. Request to consider approval of teacher term contract for one hundred and eighty-seven plus five days to Alicia Smith. I need a motion.
Motion to approve the term contract renewal recommendation for one hundred and eighty-seven plus five days to Alicia Smith as presented, subject to assignment.
Butch?
I'll second.
Brian? Copen, how do you vote?
Epstein.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. So the vote is six with one abstention. Motion passes. Next is request to consider approval of teacher term contract for one hundred and eighty-seven plus five days to Misty Dawson. I need a motion.
I make a motion that the board approve the term contract renewal recommendation for one hundred and eighty-seven plus five to Misty Dawson as presented, subject to.
Thank you, Dana.
I'll second it.
Copen? Copen, your vote?
Yes.
Lori? Lori? Butch?
Epstein.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The vote is six with one abstention. Motion carries. Moving on, request to consider approval to extend a one-year dual-term certified teacher-coach contract for one hundred and eighty-seven plus fifteen days to Charity Welles. I need a motion.
I make a motion that the board approve to extend a one-year dual-term teacher-coach contract for one hundred and eighty-seven plus fifteen days to Charity Welles. Subject to assignment.
I second.
Butch? Copen, your vote?
Yes.
Lori? Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Lori?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. The vote is seven zero, so it's unanimous. Request to consider approval to extend a teacher term contract for one hundred and eighty-seven plus ten days with the denoms that apply to David Wallfall.
I make a motion that the board approve to extend a one-year teacher term contract for one hundred and eighty-seven plus ten days to David Wallfall, so subject to assignment.
Butch?
I second.
Who was that with the second? Lori? Copen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Seven oh unanimous. Request to consider approval of general fund budget amendment number six. Mr. Nice?
Okay, thank you. Our, this year, we've had several issues with 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 maintenance. Some examples would be, we're having to rewire the entire football stadium. We we ran into some issues when we were trying to repair a bank of lights. Found out that when that stadium was built several years ago, the the main power box is underneath the the fifty-yard line. Why it was set up that that way many moons ago, long before any of us, I have no idea. So what we're having to do to fix it, instead of going out there with a shovel and digging up our turf, is to rewire the entire stadium all all the way around from pole to pole in order to get that, to get that fixed. That's a pretty expensive, you know, project that's going to be there for us. Also, we've had some severe water leaks that were like underneath slabs, underneath asphalt. They required quite a bit of work. Also, some, had to replace some some AC units and just have had a text doc comes in and and came in and required us to to change our bus lane at the middle school and we had very little time to correct that. And just some things like that. So we've, I'm asking to just to move money, not from fund balance, but from a another function that has a surplus in it. That's pretty much it.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I'm good.
Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion that the board approve the general fund amendment for number for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget as presented.
Lori?
I'll second.
Danielle? Copen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Vote is seven oh unanimous. Request to consider approval for the district to submit an educator appraisal waiver for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Yes, ma'am. Basically, the way that it's set up is the state of Texas is allowing us to apply for a waiver to temporarily waive basically the statute requirements and local board requirements for the educator appraisal system. Principals have been utilizing the educator appraisal system, but we've gotten to a point to where it's going to be very, very complicated for us to wrap that up and finish the year out. It does not mean that we are not appraising teachers or we're not appraising principals. It just means that the particular system that the board adopted is going to make it difficult to finish the year with that. And so we are applying for a waiver to the state and in hopes that we can just continue with our regular appraisal system and what we're doing. But in order to apply for that waiver, we have to have approval of our our district site-based committee, which Mr. Nice put that out to the site-based committee early last week. And the site-based committee was in favor of applying for the waiver to temporarily remove the requirements that are in board policy. And now we just need the board to take a look at it and take action upon it as well.
Okay.
I move the board of the submission of the education appraisal waiver for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year by River ISD Superintendent Richard Kelly, due to the circumstances arising from the COVID-nineteen pandemic event.
Thank you, Butch.
I'll second.
Brian? Copen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana? Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes. The vote is seven oh unanimous. Request to consider approval to move the regular May board meeting to Monday, May fourth, two thousand twenty.
I make a motion that the board approve the, to move the regular board, May board meeting to Monday, May fourth.
Lori?
Second.
Butch? Copen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Vote is seven oh unanimous. Request to consider approval of the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one contract with Turn Center. Any discussion on this? If not, I need a motion.
I make a motion that the board approve and sign the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one contract with Turn Center as presented.
Thank you, Dana.
I'll second.
Danielle? Copen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The vote is seven oh unanimous. Does anyone have anything as far as new business or future agenda items they would like to add for the next board meeting?
I don't at this time.
I don't either. I don't.
Negative. I'm clear.
No, ma'am.
I just want to say our staff and our students, they've done a phenomenal job and, I mean, we just, it's unbelievable the amount of work that everyone's putting in and I'm just incredibly proud of everyone. And I'm, I just want to say thank you to each of you board members as well for just putting so much just support behind everything and everyone that's happening up here. I just, I came up a a couple of Fridays ago and, you know, Mr. Kelly was talking about the cafeteria workers, you know, and how they were doing the the meals and it's just, they're a well-oiled machine. It's just unbelievable what they're doing every day for our kids. So in saying all that, thank you, guys. I want to thank our our staff, our our students for hanging in there. I know this is frustrating, but we're going to get through it.
If there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Butch?
I'll second.
Uh, who had that one?
You had Brian have it.
Brian?
Thank you, Copen.
You bet.
All right, we have to go through the list one more time. Copen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Brian?
And yes.
And I'm a yes. That is seven oh. It is seven oh six PM. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night, y'all.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Bye, y'all.